Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today is September 4th, 2018. Kind of surprised to see some folks here. We tried to change the day so no one would show up. See? All right, not really.
That's why we're all here.
Yeah, that's why we're all here. It's exactly right. Well, we're honored that you are here today, that you keep up with current events and see that we rescheduled our meeting from yesterday to today, so we hope today is a good profitable time for you. It's been the tradition of this board and boards all across this nation for hundreds of years to open in a couple of different ways. We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance, and we're also gonna have a prayer that's called a solemnizing prayer. And by definition, a solemnizing prayer isn't for you, it's for us, because we take what we do very seriously and we look for wisdom as we go about doing the work of the county, and to us, that's an important thing and weighs heavily on us. So this'll center us, get us started, and so we'll ask for our high sheriff chaplain to come here and open for us, and commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we come to you, first of all, we want to thank you for your blessings upon us, and thank for the county commissioners and the dedication and work they do, Lord. And I know they prepared for this meeting today, and we thank for them, give them the wisdom they need today, and for all those that attend us today, for the business needs to be taken care of, Lord. Give us all the wisdom we need. Thank you for your blessings upon Rowan County and this nation, Lord. God interact us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all. Taylor, thank you for being here. To being here, we appreciate you very much.
I understand that since I got a surprise the other day, trailer, so I understand that somebody said that y'all might could give me a truck and pull it.
No one said that.
I didn't hear anyone say that. In fact, I didn't know you got a trailer. Whose idea was that? We're kidding. Thank you. Thank you for what... In fact, I was in Georgia this weekend with my... some of my family, and talking to my brother-in-law, and told him about Shield of Badges Prayer Program, and he was very impressed with it, and their county down there might be calling you. So appreciate what you do. All right, so we've got a couple of changes to the agenda. Commissioners, you have in front of you an item from Commissioner Pierce. We'll call that Item 4A on the active agenda. That'll be 4A. And then we have an item from the EDC, and that'll just go on consent, and we'll call that Consent Item T, as in Tom. And are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as changed?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have the minutes have been provided for us, last Wednesday of the August 20th, 2018 meeting. Motion approved those?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now we have the amended consent agenda provided. Do we have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And do we have anyone signed up for yes we do? How do you pronounce this name? Ronnie Smith. Mr. Smith. Pleasure to meet you.
Yes, sir.
I believe we've seen you here before.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's good to have you, Ronnie.
Thank you very, very much. I'll be brief, as brief as I can. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and members of our commission. You know me, my name is Ronnie Smith. I'm a lifelong resident of Salisbury and Rowan County. I'm also a Vietnam veteran, and I love Rowan County and I love Salisbury. Briefly, my purpose today is, number one, to thank you. Thank you to the members of the Rowan County Commissioners and the Salisbury City Council, who very recently conducted site visits at the proposed sites for the Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial, and for the meetings we've had to discuss this wonderful and magnificent project for our city. This same invitation is extended to every citizen in Salisbury and Rowan County. My second purpose is to provide you with a copy of a letter. I have a copy here for Carolyn, and you have a copy in front of you. This is a letter updating you on these seven-year projects. Your letter is self-explanatory, and rather than read it, I'll let you share that letter after the meeting with those who you feel like need to know. Lastly, my purpose today is to ask you once again, to ask you once again to please, please, please support us on our goal for this magnificent monument for our community and the placement of the Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall at the previously designated, preferred, and surveyed locations. Number one, near the existing Vietnam mural at the Salisbury City Park, or an alternative site on North Main Street near the Rowan County Courthouse. If we act now, we can meet our goal to erect, celebrate, commemorate, and dedicate this monument, hopefully no later than Veterans Day. In closing, I'll paraphrase one of our community leaders who joined me at the site of the Vietnam or the proposed site for the Vietnam Monument, when she said, "After hearing all of this information and knowing what I know now, I don't see how anyone, anyone could possibly oppose this memorial or the sites which have been recommended. This is one monument which will unite our community." Thank you very much. God bless you. God bless Rowan County, and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and we'll see you on the 18th. All right. All right, now we have an update from the Register of Deeds office. Mr. John is here. He's the director of Register of Deeds, doing a good job there, and it's good to have you. Have anyone with you that you'd like to...
I do. I have Shane, who's my senior assistant in the office today, too. Just wanna kinda get you updated on some things we're doing in the office, some changes we've made, and some things we're really proud of. This is going into our third year in our Think of Vet program in the Register of Deeds office, where we will issue an ID card to any veteran who presented a DD-214 or DD-214 to the office for safeguarding. If they present that DD-214, they can be issued a Think of Vet card, and that Think of Vet card gives them discounts throughout the county. This is going into the third year, we have over 10% of our veterans now, 1,200 veterans in Rowan County now hold that card, and they're using it throughout the county now to receive those extra benefits, and it's a way for us to say thank you for your service year-round, and really proud of the program. And we, the last few years, we've parked cars or done fundraisers for the Think of Vet, and all the money that we've raised goes back to those veterans at giveaway in November. We just give the cash and money and prizes back to them, and we've had law firms offer packages, and $2,500 packages for different things for the veterans and stuff, so upwards of thousands of dollars that we gave back to the veterans through fundraisers and through veterans supportive of the community, too. We're really proud of that. Since we started that three years ago, we've had 650 DD-214s recorded in our office. They usually come one or two a month, but since that program started, we've had an influx of those DD-214s come in, which is great, because if something happens and that person has passed away, that person, the family that's left behind is not scrambling for the paperwork, and that veteran gets the rights, the burial rights that they deserve and things they deserve as a veteran. So really proud of that. We also started shortly after what we call a letter to the veteran's widder or widder. And what happens if we get the death certificate back in their office and shows the person was a veteran, we send a letter to that person, the informant or the spouse that's left behind, to let them know there may be benefits available to them, and information where they can contact Veterans Services and get those benefits, just by sending a letter out and let them know, because they may not be aware of who to contact and the time of need and what they need to do next. So we make that available to those by sending a letter out to everyone that we know that's a veteran that's deceased in Rowan County. We recently started a fraud prevention program in the Register of Deeds office, and what that does is called Property Check. A person can go online now and enter their name and information, and anybody files a document using their name, they can be notified by either their text or phone to let them know that somebody's entered information in their name, which is a big deal with all the fraud that goes on now with the mortgages and stuff that goes on across the United States. So it's something we're very proud of. We recently just added three new registers to the workstations in our office. Those three new registers now, two in the passport office, and one more at the counter has streamlined some of the recordings that come to the counter and the vital records, so we have a quicker turnaround, and our staff is manning the counter the whole time, and as they come to the counter, they're waiting on the customer to come to them, and they're constantly working there and getting the job done, so I'm really proud of the staff we have. We recently started a thing called Historical Record Search, and what we've done, we've indexed all the records in the... indexes from 1753 to 1921 are now all available online, so you can go in and 1753 documents, key in a person's name, and it brings back the book and page starting in 1753. We're gonna close the gap on that, and we're gonna work from 74 back, and eventually all the indexes will be available online, and it'll be available to whoever wants to view them from there. So our land record indexes will all close in the gap for having all of our historical records available, they can see them. Our next phase, like I say, will be from 74 to 54 range, and we'll finish closing those gaps. These things that we're accomplishing with this has been done with automation preservation funds, so taxpayers hadn't footed the bill for any of this, so we're really proud of that, too, by getting the job done, and taxpayers don't have to pay more for it. Preservation of records, we send our books out, and they're sent out to a place who has a library congress that's trained them, and they'll take these books and they'll deacidify them, take the pages that have acid, acid-style paper, and they'll spray them with deacidifier, they'll clean them, mend the paper, and encapsulate them, and send the books back to us. So these records, these old books that we had from the 1700s, they're being preserved, so they'll be there from now on, and we'll protect those as they come along. But something else we were proud of that started lately is the passport program. Since we started a passport program in May, we've had... we've helped with the execution of over 200 passports now. We have taken 160 photos. That puts it at nearly $9,000 return to the general fund as of May this year. With that, I pass that to you memo with the board's approval. There's something to take a look at, but would like to, if possible, maybe make the passports available to, as a benefit to county employees, and I put a proposal there in the memo to you if it's something you may be interested in, but it's something we're proud of. The cost for us to do that, other than the person doing it, would cost about 33 to 35 cent per person if we was to do that, so we're really proud of what's going on there, kinda gets you up to date where we're at, but thank you for all your help, we couldn't do it without you.
This is really exciting about the historical records, and I just wanted to ask, John, have you been in touch with Gretchen Witt over at the Rowan Public Library? She's the historian over there.
We do. We have contact with them. One of the things with them recently, we replaced one of our aging map platter machines. It's about a $12,000 platter, but when it become aging, we couldn't use anymore, we actually donated it to the library, so we want a good working relationship with them, and if we need things, and just instead of sending it a surplus, that's something they could actually use, and that platter to make those copies again from there, so we're really proud of that, too, that even though that purchase made, it stayed in the county, and somebody still got to keep using it, so.
Great, thanks.
John, the DD-214s, now you said that you are keeping them. They're not part of public record, then?
They are not. They're kept for a time before they can be released, even to the public can view them, I think 80 years right now before the public can even see them. So that separation of time would be the person that's probably deceased before somebody could even view that record anymore. The mainly is safeguarded for, as they can come back if they need it at no charge, the veteran can get a copy, certified copies of DD-214 at no charge, once we have it recorded in the office, and at the funeral home, or if they need it for Veterans Affairs, or they can always come back at no charge to the veteran, and we always tell the veteran, you've already paid for it. So we just come in, at any time, we'll take care of it.
Well, it also helps in the timeframe, that if somebody has to come in and file for a funeral, or if they're trying to get VA benefits or something, then they don't have to spend an additional two or three weeks waiting for...
That's right.
...to come in from Washington.
That's right, and we're proud to keep those records for them and proud for the turnaround. We can give them that copy back within a matter of minutes if they get us a chance to record it. So our biggest thing with the Think of Vet was to encourage the recording of that, so they'll have it safe-keep, for safekeeping down the road, and also the other benefit was to give back to those veterans, and we have over 100 businesses now in Rowan County that support the Think of Vet. We're gonna do a Think of Vet fundraiser coming up in October, and once again, that money will go back to the veterans, and we look forward to every year. It's a good time. We have, the start of the morning, we have breakfast sandwiches for the veterans, we have hot dogs throughout the day, they put their name in a hat, and at the end of the day, whoever's name we pull out, we give all, everything away. So we're really, really proud of that.
Every time I talk to John or folks in his office, they're doing something new, and they're innovative, and they are certainly service-oriented to the folks of Rowan County. I'm just really proud of John and his staff, even Shane. I give Shane a hard time all the time, but he does a good job for them. But you know, every time you go to something where there's law enforcement being served, or first responders being served, veterans being served, there's John and his staff sweating like a dog and cooking up hamburgers and hot dogs and chicken, and I just appreciate... John's a big guy, and not that I couldn't take him, but John's a big guy, but John's got a big heart, and I think everyone knows that, and John, we're really proud of you, and for the record, I couldn't take you. But appreciate what you do...
It's a lot of fun.
...for the citizens, but more so, we appreciate your heart and what you do for our community.
Thank you.
Counselor, do... and I don't know if we're ready to present this. Commissioners, if you'd like to take a look at it and maybe put it on a later agenda, or if you'd like to deal with it now, is this... Counselor, is this something that we can provide as a benefit to our employees? There's... when you go to get a passport, there's several costs that are built into that. John, maybe you could explain the several costs?
If you already have the passport itself, the execution fee is not gonna be important to you, but if you have not received the passport, or if you need a passport, you have to pay a $35 execution fee to execute the process, and a $10 photo fee. If you go outside of our office, sometimes the cost for the photo is a little more. We only charge $10. There's some places that charge quite a bit more for the same process, but 35 is the set fee for the execution. So the execution and the photo would save a person $45 a person, and this fee alone here wouldn't be something that the Register of Deeds staff could take advantage of, but with something we want to do for the others, if that's possible.
So, but there's other fees, federal fees, that are built into that.
That's correct.
So they're not gonna get a free passport.
That's right.
It's just the Rowan County fees.
That's right. The only thing they'll be able to waive would be the execution fee, which is a 35, and the photo fee of $10. The normal fees to Department of State, they have to be rendered to Department of State, so.
If I could take that under advisement and report back to the board at the next meeting, that'd be good.
That'd be fine. Yeah, okay. Anything else for John? All right, thank you very much, John.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you being here. Appreciate you, buddy. Item number four is budget amendments. Those have been provided to us. Had a chance to go through them. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we'll move on to Item 4A. Commissioner Pierce.
Commissioners, you know, one of the main duties that we have as county commissioners is to protect our citizens, and this issue of grass clippings being broadcast onto the highways has affected a lot of people, not only in this county, but statewide. So I looked into the rumors that there is a law against that, and come to find out, there's actually not. There's a problem, according to the sheriff, that the definitions that are provided in certain statutes do not clearly state grass, leaves, or any type of limbs being in the road as an obstacle that is not approved. It has to be something that... they don't classify biodegradable clippings as a hazard. So what I'm asking to do is to have our planning board review this statute and give us proper language so that we can pass a zoning ordinance change for this law, so that we can have people hopefully not get citations, but hopefully wake up and understand that what they're doing is hazardous to our citizens, and that it needs to be stopped. But according to our sheriff, we have no enforcement of that, and I certainly don't want all our deputies running around the county trying to tell people to quit doing something that's hazardous if we don't have any teeth into the ordinance. So my request is to have this sent to the planning board and our planning staff, and have them come up with appropriate language, and so that you don't think this is an isolated incident. The town of Spencer has already passed this ordinance, and then after, if we can get this worked out, I would like to have this board send a resolution to the state legislature asking them to make their state ordinance compliant with this same language. So that's what I'm asking to do.
So your motion is to send it to the planning board?
Send it, and Planning Department also, to make sure we cover all the bases.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
All right.
So I guess there's a lot of parts that need to be flushed out of this, and a lot of stakeholders that need to be involved, such as the Sheriff's Department, the Highway Patrol, DA's office. So are you asking them to bring an ordinance back, or bring back information of what we would need to do? I don't know that we want to go straight to an ordinance without knowing a little more information about...
Well, I'll yield to the county attorney. I've been in discussions with him for quite some time, and then we finally went to the sheriff to find out what it is we would have to do, and he called Raleigh and went through everything up there to make sure that there's nothing that's already in place that specifies this as a hazardous material. So what I'm asking to do is, according to what my county attorney has advised, is to send it to the planning board and the planning department, and let them come up with appropriate language to identify what hazardous materials are being broadcast into the roadways, and then we can pass it as a zoning amendment to our ordinance here for the county. Then if the state wants to take it up and make it statewide, they can, but until that happens, and you and I both know how quick that moves, that I would like to at least to have that enforcement here inside our county to protect our citizens.
I'm all in favor of protecting the citizens, and I'm just a bit puzzled, will the zoning board come up with whether the fine is for the owner of the property, or for, in the case of where we have so many lawn services nowadays, that they might be throwing clippings out on the highway that the owner's not aware of, and how are we gonna attack that type of an issue?
And that's exactly why I want to send it to that board, to get more than one person's opinion of just exactly the verbiage that we need to have in this zoning text amendment. And to answer your question, I think it should be the actual person that's broadcasting the clippings into the road to be held responsible. Reason I say that, I rode down the road the other day in front of Rowan Memorial Park on 601 Highway. That guy's mowing up a storm, broadcasting grass all the way across both lanes of 601 Highway. That's not the responsibility, I don't think, of the actual graveyard. I think it's that individual is being negligent in his responsibility of running that equipment. So that's why I want to have more than one set of eyes on this thing, so that we can be fair about it, but at the same time, we need to address the problem, because it is an issue that anything two- or three-wheeled, it puts them at jeopardy, include bicycles, motorcycles, even mopeds, as far as that goes. So with that amount of traffic that we have currently on our highways, I think it's time we address this situation.
So Commissioner Pierce, would that also include those people that are hired by the state to do the mowing?
If you've ever looked at their equipment, their mowing clippings go straight down. They don't broadcast out. Even when they've got the circle bar up, they only use the circle bar on the... past the ditch line. The actual mowing that they have, it's a bush hog, it throws the clipping straight down. Yes, I considered that before we even talked about this, and like I said, my biggest concern is it's a growing problem, and I don't know if it's just been this way, but I get notifications weekly from people that are up and down the highways wanting to know about it, and you know, I personally experienced it several times on Old Moxville Road. It's constantly going on. I'm not trying to tell people how to motor yard, I just want them to be considerate of those two- and three-wheel motorists that are out here on the highways.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I may address Commissioner Caskins, the typical process, and this is what we talked about, the typical process is to send it back to planning staff and the planning board. What we would do as staff is we would first determine whether we have the lawful authority to regulate. If we do, then we typically research other communities, see if they've adopted anything to start answering these smaller questions. Who does it apply to? Property owner, person cutting the grass, you know, whatever it is, and we start to flush those things out, and then that goes through the planning board where they further flush those things out, and then it comes to you as just a recommendation, where they've hopefully addressed, and like we've said before, you know, commissioners are free to come to those meetings and have input as well, but the process is, first, just to go back to staff, we review it, make sure we can regulate. If we can regulate, then we look for existing texts that's already out there, where they've answered these questions, then it just goes through the process to evolve into something that might come up this way. And so that's fairly standard for any zoning text amendment that we do.
So we don't... at this point, we don't know, because I guess Spencer was brought up, Spencer owns their roads, they maintain their own roads. We don't maintain or own any roads. So we're not sure if we can even do this yet. Is that what we're saying?
There's an awful lot of municipalities that have it.
And...
Municipalities, and they have... I understand that, but...
And there are some distinctions. It's interesting, we regulate nuisances that the activity occurs on a property owner's property, but the result of it's either in the air, or it's in a ditch, or it's in a right-of-way. I mean, we regulate a lot of activities that migrate off of a property owner's property. But yeah, we would first determine, before we go to the expense and time of formulating text, that we have the lawful authority to do it. That's always the first thing we look at, no matter what it is.
Well, I had... somebody called me Sunday night, and he was unaware that Craig was bringing this up, and I let him know about it, and it was the same issue. And then he had talked to one of the state representatives, state representatives had sent him some stuff, some information. So you know, I don't have a problem with the planning board looking at it. I do think it's an issue. I don't know, at this point, I haven't made my decision of whether or not we need another statute, or you know, ultimately, I think this is something the state should do, because our citizens drive in other counties, and they're gonna have the same issues there. But if it's something that, you know, the panel wants to look at, I really have a problem with that. I don't, at this point, know what they're gonna bring us, and you know, whether or not in the end I can support what it is they bring us, because I don't... just too much information. But I do like your idea of them looking at it, and you know, like I said, at this point, I'd rather the state do something than we do. Sure. An extra layer of regulation on, but we talked a little bit about, you know, ever since I've been a child, I've seen people blow grass in the road. I've blown grass in the road when I used to live near a road where I would... I don't live near a road now, I live out in the woods, but... and so you never think about it. So maybe a lot of it is the mindset, maybe it's more of a public... an idea that the public needs to say, hey, don't do that, there's people driving through in their bicycles and in their motorcycles, and it's probably the ones that affect more than the cars, but... so anyway, I don't have a problem with the planning board looking at it. I mean, today, like I said, other than that, I don't know where I would go with it. I'd like to see what they would bring back, but like I said, I'd rather the state do something than...
Well, I'd love the state to do something, but you know, how many times it works out? In the meantime, are we not doing what we should to protect our citizens locally, the ones that put us in office? And where I'm looking at is, we... I agree with you, we don't know what it's gonna be, but we need to find out, and if there's a way that we can find out, and a way that we can objectively not cure the problem, but give us the ammunition, so to speak, that we need to handle this, then I think it's worthwhile to investigate it and just see where we end up.
Right, and like I said, I agree, but I do think we need to make sure we have all the stakeholders involved, because I'm not 100% sure, but I think most of the accidents in the county are investigated by the Highway Patrol, and so you wouldn't have a deputy coming in after the Highway Patrol and write a ticket for grass clippings in the road. And this person that I talked to, they brought up an example of a motorcycle that recently wrecked, and Highway Patrol came out, and they didn't do anything about... they didn't write a ticket, or didn't do anything, and they were upset at the Highway Patrol. So we have to make sure they're also know what we're doing, and the DA, because they have to prosecute whatever it is that we... because they have to prosecute whatever it is that we ultimately put in there. We don't want to put some ordinance this hard for them to prosecute.
Well, I'll bring it back to, just like what we did with animal services, where we changed our leash law, and we changed our housing for animals. We haven't had to write any citations, but we've, we've got the problem corrected. And I think that's one of the things here. If we put the ordinance, or the zoning text amendment in place, and then we publicize the fact that in Rowan County, that's not going to be acceptable, then maybe people's attitude will change to make sure that this doesn't become a hazard.
Well, and to your point, this could be the launching pad for public awareness for this to start with, knowing that we're looking at it, because that's the whole point, is not to get people in trouble, is just make the road safer.
Yeah, I don't, our deputies have plenty to do without writing citations for grass clippings, but, you know, if you blow it out in the road, most people have a blower, blow it back into the ditch when you're done. I mean, you know, just common courtesy, and, and looking out for our fellow citizens is what this is about. So I'm just asking for the, you know, the time for the planning board and planning department to look at this, and see what ideas we can come up with that can address this problem.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Or if not, all in favor of sending this to planning board, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Move on to item number five, and board appointments. Charlotte Regional Partnership Board, I'm going to reapply for, apply for reappointment to that board. Do we have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Say.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
East Gold Hill Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioners, Tony Trexel's applied for reappointment. Motion to accept Tony, and also Jerry Hill's applied for reappointment to East Gold Hill Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners Board. Do we have a motion to accept those, too?
So moved.
All, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Granite Quarry Planning ETJ, Michelle Reed is applied to fill an at-large vacancy. And we have a motion to accept Michelle?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Greg Lowe applied to fill an at-large vacancy in the ETJ zoning, Granite Quarry Zoning Board, motion to accept Greg Lowe.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
George Benson applied to fill an at-large vacancy at the Transit Authority Committee. Motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
The Rowan County Economic Development Commission, Sean Adelsberger has resigned from the EDC. Sean's moved. Do we have a motion to accept his resignation?
So moved.
Say.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And then Tim Proper has applied to fill the vacancy. Motion to accept Tim?
So moved.
Second?
Say.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Tourism Development Authority, Paul Hall has resigned from the TDA. Motion to accept Paul's resignation?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Don Bringle, boy, did we do a background check? Oh, our Don Bringle, has applied to fill the vacancy. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second, any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We have Rowan County citizens, 32 openings. And that means opportunity. Opportunity to develop some leadership, and get involved in your community. So we would love if you would have yourself, or if you have some family or friends that would like to get involved in the community, to contact us. One of the commissioners, or our board clerk, we would love to have you get involved. Let's see, anything else for the cause?
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you, all have a good week. Happy birthday.